To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd remind those in attendance this evening that if you'd like to speak, we have a sign up sheet in the back and we'd love for you to take your time to sign up and love to hear from you. First item, business item is to approval of the agenda this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four are matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I'm verifying a date, but just again to announce my monthly constituent meeting will be Tuesday, October the first. Usually meet at French Press Coffee House at nine o'clock in the morning and open agenda for whatever folks want to talk about. So always glad to talk to folks.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
No, I just want to say that last week I had the honor to go to Frontier Culture Museum where they had a swearing in of 77 new citizens. And if you've never been to one of those events, it is a great heart blessing event.
Yeah. Thank you. I had the note was a couple of Fridays ago, the chance to go to, I know Mr. Allen, it was one of his favorite things to do, was go to over to William Perry Elementary and speak with four third grade classrooms. And I would extend my heartfelt appreciation to my colleagues to get the mayor's spot for a couple of years here because it is absolutely hands down one of my favorite things to do in the whole world. They're such a great school, great kids and great teachers over there. All right. Next on the agenda is presentation on the U.S. Census Bureau. Mr. Hamm.
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Mayor Short and members of council. The federal government of the United States has conducted a decennial census since 1790 and as required by Article One, Section Two of the Constitution. The data collected in the census is relied upon for important, pertinent, important purposes such as determining representation in the United States House of Representatives, allocating appropriations of federal dollars, drawing local, state and federal districts for elected representation, and constructing various facilities such as hospitals. Ms. Roseanne Ruckman, a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau, will provide a brief presentation this evening regarding the process for the 2020 census and highlight the importance of participation. Eventually, the council will be asked to consider adopting a resolution promoting participation in the census and creating a regional complete count committee with the city of Stanton and Augusta County. We'll consider such a resolution at a subsequent meeting. But this evening we'll focus on Ms. Ruckman's presentation about the census process and the importance of participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Again, Roseanne Ruckman. And no, I don't know how to pronounce it correctly, as close as I can come to it. And excuse me, I live at 1743 Inglewood Drive in Stanton. I have been with the U.S. Census Bureau as a partnership specialist since April 15th, and I am working in Augusta, Bath, Highland and Rockbridge Counties. Just so you know, excuse me, CSPDC is working with us. They have a liaison. Rebecca Joyce, most of you, if not all of you, know her. And she is working with us. They are not taking over the process. The process belongs to the communities themselves. But my job is to educate and to engage and to encourage people to work with the Census Bureau. Very quickly, I have a, actually I had a 15-minute PowerPoint which I am going to spare you tonight. You may all applaud right now. So we can do, what I'm doing is taking the choice bits out of it, the most persuasive and most important elements, and I will cover those with you. You each should have a packet. I will not talk with you about what is on the right-hand side because that's just general information. Important information, but stuff you probably already know. And if not, you may read that later. The important stuff I put on the left-hand side, and I'd like to refer you to the three-page handout that says counting for dollars. This is not a Census Bureau production. This was a study done by George Washington University, the Institute of Public Policy. And they took a look in, this was in fiscal year 2016, of all of the federal monies that come down to the states from the federal government to support 55 programs. And if you will look at that first page, it says in fiscal year 2016, Virginia received, and this is from a pot of about 675 billion, maybe 800 or more billion, I'm not sure, we received 18 billion, almost, not quite. If you turn the page, you'll see that that monies supported 55 critical federal programs. And you actually see the dollar amounts that went to each one. And this is just for the state of Virginia. Turn the page and you will see that the most, the greater portion of that monies, 10 billion, 182 million plus, went to support 16 of those 55 programs. Number one, Medicaid. Number two, Medicare. SNAP. Number three, and so on. These are all programs that are very important to every community in the central Shenandoah and obviously to Waynesboro as well. I will leave you to read that on your own. But here's, here's the point. If you look at the next page, it says Virginia final mail participation rates by county and city. And it's pink because my red printer ran out. So in case you're wondering, I didn't, I didn't make that choice. If you, what I've done is highlight the cities and counties that are part of the CSPDC. So if you look at the middle, near the top, you will see Waynesboro. In 2000, the decennial in 2000, these were only mailed forms. Next year, we will be able to do online and 800 number as well, which we think will improve participation. But in 2000 and 2010, they were only mailed. So these are the actual numbers, percents of returned forms. 73% from Waynesboro City in 2000. You were up 2% to 75% in 2010. Here's the deal. That's one out of four. That's one out of four, which means one out of four dollars potentially. Now, we, the Census Bureau, have nothing to do with the funding. We don't have anything to do with the funding formula, so I'll make that statement upfront. But the better job we can do of helping you to count everyone, and you won't see a 100% on here. I would love to see that. But I don't know how you get there. But if we can do better than 75%, then a couple of things happen. When it comes time for Congress to reapportion delegates, if my, here's my ultimate threat. Are you ready? Wait for it. Northern and eastern Virginia do a better job of counting than southern and western Virginia. Guess what? They get the extra delegates and they get advocacy that we don't get when it comes time for the governor and the state legislators to consider budgets and projects and so on. So it's as important for the advocacy, in my mind, as it is for the actual funding. And this is, this is one in four. I can't say that equates to one in four dollars, but there is that general correlation there. The thing that, things that we can do, there's another form here I won't go through point by point. A lot of these are passive things that you can do that cost no money and almost no time. Things like putting the census information on your website and Facebook pages, posting articles, which we can provide for you, supporting us out loud in your newsletters and other organs of the city and that sort of thing. And there, on the other side, are things we can do to help. That is my job. I am not counting anybody. I am not taking anybody's data. My job is to educate and encourage and to engage our community partners. And here's my bottom line. The people you most need to count are the people who are hardest to count typically. Renters, migrants, the homeless, sometimes individuals with disabilities and seniors, children zero to five, the hardest to count population of all. Why? It's as if parents don't know they have them. I don't know what the story is. Nobody can figure it out. But if we can work with, and I am doing this, if we can work with Head Start, early Head Start, with the elementary schools, with daycare, with pediatricians offices, we don't ask them for information, but we can leave information for, for the patients and clients in the waiting room and ask them to send it home with them and so on. Homeless, I don't know where they are. And even if I did and flashed my badge, it would make no difference to them. But if we can work with Valley Mission and the Refuge Center and food banks and faith-based organizations that have volunteers that do that sort of thing, then we can find those people. And here's, here's the ultimate point. Not only will that bump up your count measurably, but it will also help provide funding for those who need it most. Your alternatives are raise taxes or cut services. So I am here to help. I'm with the federal government and I am here to help. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay. I am around. I'm usually in Waynesboro. I do a circuit in my, my communities, Augusta, Bath, Highland and Rockbridge Counties. So every five to 10 days, and if you need for me to come and do something, I am, Ms. Anderson and I are working on a couple of programs. So we've already got scheduled at the library and other things. So if there are things or people, groups, individuals that you want me to come and talk with, just get in touch. You have my contact info. And I would love to stay and listen to the rest of this, but I'm supposed to be in Richmond for a team meeting, so I'm going to leave. But please contact me at any time. Yes?
Actually, Ms. Ruckford, I do have one question. When do we expect this to kick off? When will we start getting mailings or getting emails about people filling things in?
I will know more about that by the time I come back on Thursday. I will actually, I will, I will send you information about that. They're going to talk with us more about that. But I am told reliably that by January, you will be sick of hearing about the census. That is what I'm told. So we will be out there and you will learn a whole lot more between now and then. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Item number six is to consider a revised resolution supporting the city's application to the Virginia Department of Transportation's revenue sharing program for the purpose of constructing a roundabout at the intersection of East Main and Delphine Avenue. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this resolution would amend the resolution previously adopted by the city council endorsing the application to the revenue sharing program. At our last meeting in the work session, Mayor Short raised the question about street lighting for the roundabout. So we've had conversations with representatives at the Virginia Department of Transportation and our own consulting engineers. VDOT staff has indicated they, they would typically allow a 5% to 10% budget of the total project cost for street lighting and then as well an additional 5% to 10% of total project cost for landscaping. So what we're suggesting to the council is that we would increase the budget by 20%. That allows for contingency, which I think at this stage of the planning makes sense, that generally as you go through a construction project, your cost estimating becomes tighter and tighter and you tend to reduce your contingency amounts. The amount that was previously endorsed by the city council for the project was $862,000. The city would be responsible for 50% of that or $431,000. The installation of lighting and landscaping could add an additional $172,400 to the project, bringing the total cost to $1,034,400. The city's share of that cost would be $517,200. I would say also that the addition of street lighting and some landscaping makes sense. I think I would argue that, one, the city's comprehensive plan specifically calls out the East Main Street corridor as a gateway to the city and calls for the city to make improvements to that gateway through streetscaping, landscaping, other investments. And two, the city is already a recipient of a $2.2 million smart scale grant, which is meant to install multi-use path and streetscaping from the East Main Street Bridge to the eastern city limit of the city. That is program for fiscal year 2024. So conceivably, the roundabout could be built prior to that. And if we were going to install things like landscaping and lighting, it would make sense to do that in advance of your streetscaping project. So with that, I would, available answer any questions you might have. But we do have a revised resolution for you this evening.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll just offer that I'm going to abstain as an employee of the Virginia Department of Transportation. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Thank you. Number seven is to consider adopting a resolution establishing the rate of relief under the Personal Property Tax Relief Act at 33% for the calendar year 2019. Mr. Hamm.
Mayor Short and members of council, this presentation is getting some age on it. But if you'll recall, in 2004 and 2005, the General Assembly enacted legislation and budget amendments that altered significantly the manner in which the personal property tax relief program or car tax program is administered at the state and local levels. The administration of the PPTRA, as it's sometimes called, for Waynesboro requires the council to adopt annually a resolution establishing the rate or percentage of relief for qualifying vehicles. The resolution presented for your consideration establishes the rate of relief at 33% for the 2019 tax year. The percentage of relief for last year was 49%. The appreciable reduction in percentage of relief is attributable to the increase in the tax rate from $2.50 per $100 of assessment to $3.25 per 100 of assessment and the increase in the tax base. The amount of personal property tax relief distributed to each locality is determined by the General Assembly. Waynesboro receives about $1.7 million annually until otherwise determined by the General Assembly. Percentage of personal property tax relief afforded to taxpayers may vary from year to year according to the tax rate and/or assessed value of registered qualifying vehicles in the city. Again, adoption of the resolution is necessary for implementation of the relief, and it is my recommendation that the council consider and ultimately adopt the resolution establishing rate of relief at 33% for the 2019 tax year.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing the PPTRA rate of relief at 33%?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number eight is communication correspondence and calendar. Hamp.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. Number nine is citizen comment period.
Apparently no one has signed up to speak.
Okay. All right. With that, we have a closed meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I moved recess into closed meeting to consider personnel matters regarding the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, benefits, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of a specific public officer, appointee or employee of the city as permitted by Code Section, Virginia Code Section 2.23711A and 1. The subject matter of this meeting is personnel matters for certain public employees.
Great. And this requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Houshtetter?
Aye.
Close session. Thank you.
Councilman Housestutter?
Aye.
Close session. Thank you.[178.23]
With respect to the just concluded closed session, and to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by council.
I think this requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Hofstadter?
Aye.
We're back in session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Take it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?